All right, minutes.
All right, then I would like to entertain the motion for approving the minutes with corrections.
I move we approve the minutes with corrections for what? For November.
There's been properly moved and seconded that we approved the November minutes with corrections. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that, we will move now move to a vote of the motion of approving the minutes for November with the corrections. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The minutes with corrections have been approved by voice vote. Onto the budget.
That's part of the budget. Which part do you look at first?
I like to look at this one because it differs what Emily breaks and maybe you can explain. Yeah, so this breaks out in bigger font and with the price and the place and what was ordered and who it was ordered for. Out of, it's like five pages. If you go to the one that says like 105.
Yeah, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Well, no, not on, yes, but no, these ones.
Oh yeah, well then go, yes, yes, so I got those.
Yeah, this section right here. So I break all that out. So then it's easier to. And this is what comes from the. This is, yeah, Cheryl provides all of this for me every.
Sometimes they don't even, it's about the tax receivable, all that stuff. Other question? The maintenance repair from Big Sandy is evidently. So what if we paint or anything that we take it from somewhere?
That could also, we could look at the foundation numbers too. That was where the original. Most of the original paint purchase of that one part.
All right.
But yes, numbers tend to be moved around.
You need a blankie?
Always, no, not always.
I like my blankies. Toner cartridges, oh, I can't believe how much those cost. Is the door fixed? Yes. Yeah, I was, do you want me to tell about the?
Well, we'll talk about.
Yeah.
Later.
Yeah, the doors fixed and the gutters are done. And well, good vibes. Gravel. Yay, gravel came. Day before. Yeah. Great.
All right. Any question, any more questions? I would like to entertain the motion for the approval of the budget.
I'll move to approve the budget.
I have a second. It has been properly moved and seconded that we approved the budget. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The budget, the motion to approve the budget has been approved by voice vote. Branch reports. So for Big Sandy for November, they had their November social media campaign. It was wildly successful. That was a really great thing both on, so they posted that to Instagram and it's connected to Facebook. So that was great. Also Native American Heritage, Veterans Day, Hibernation and Thanksgiving. They were working their way through the Montana room and relabeled it. Not relabeled every book, but making sure that they all were uniform and looked the same.
But that looks really nice.
Yeah, yeah. And then so needs and concerns, this is on the agenda for later also. So painting needs to be done around the new door mechanisms and I have pictures for that later and and then Darlene mentioned through the foyer and throughout the library and then to look at the carpeting. So, but we can talk about that more later. Forbidden themes, Native American Heritage Month, Thanksgiving, gratitude, Veterans Day, adoption, shoes, refugees, superheroes, and then in the YA section, the YA Prince Award. So I put a little blurb there about what that is. Projects getting ready for Shoto County Country Christmas. That was right at the beginning of December for decorating the book sale. We had an all staff meeting in November. And then the public library survey, those I'm going to talk about during my director's report also. Geraldine themes, family, Thanksgiving and Native Americans projects, which I'm going to talk about too. I have a lot of double. Sammy Jo applied for and received a Humanities Montana Book Club grant. She needed a toner. Also, we got that ordered and then still working through the storage space. I contacted the state and found out how to run a report on all the books that are in the Hywood School Library right now. So according to the computer, there are 7,166 items. So it's good thorough inventory to see what's there and what's missing and awaiting. So I am starting very just a very tentative planning phases to get that done this summer, probably hopefully right after school gets out. I need to talk to the superintendent Brianna Bowman and get that scheduled. So.
I was told that they kept the books that we ordered separate.
Yeah, I heard a lot of things and read a lot of things. Darren went through and looked at minutes from the last. Since what? Oh, eight, I think. Well, it was 20. Again, these are just the very initial.
These are like.
I do not believe that there is dedicated librarian. They are checking out books though. So if you look in the circulation, circulation statistics, that fourth column, HBO, Hyperbranch Library. They have mostly, of course, juvie, children's books. I mean, there's some fiction and then some. I mean, I think they have some YA, but yeah, I mean, still, that's a good check out through there. So. So. I think so, to get started. Some next steps. How do you get in those circulation numbers? That's from the circulation statistics are from the computer. It's every time you scan a book. And I don't know if we talked about it at a board meeting or if it was in a separate meeting that we had. So when the branches get books, when any other branch gets a book from any other branch, we have the branch card that you check them out to. But the branch that it's being checked out through gets the, yeah, so like a Big Sandy gets books from here, check them out to Big Sandy. But however the computer works, when she checks them out from Big Sandy to whoever's checking them out, the Big Sandy Library gets that. It's not a double count or a, yeah, it's just not a double count. Okay, so.
It's a lot of stuff to keep track of.
Yeah, that's why that's nice that that works, the computer.
Yeah.
So then the state people are very quick for, like I asked how to print that report and the person got back to me within, within an hour to get that done. So, yeah. All right, good vibes. You were talking about the gravel.
Well, we didn't, we haven't, the doors are done, the.
That'll be.
The thing is out, the, I think the checks, they both got their checks for the, the doors and the.
Oh, good.
What are those things? And then, let's see, what else do I have? We have.
So is the gravel in the back?
Yeah.
And on the side?
And I, and I have not gone back there. Darling just showed me a picture and I haven't.
That must have been after I was there a long time.
Well, I think it just came like, was I at town yesterday?
Yeah.
Yesterday or the day before.
Cause she's been really great about showing me.
Yeah.
The new things.
We've got a, well, memorial money, but then the Tortic Foundation.
Oh, good.
So I guess.
That I can take those over to town.
And then she got another grant.
Yeah, and I made copies of those for everyone, actually.
Okay.
From the, yeah. And I'm going to talk about that in my director's report.
Okay, so, yeah, what else? Guess, oh, and that, well, the paint, yeah, that would.
That'll be right.
Yeah.
Yep. Good things.
Yeah. Gravel. I want to go steal some.
Are we doing good, Ben?
Yes.
I think, good job doing the, getting it put on Saturday. The country.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Successful? Awesome.
I think Big Sandy's was too.
Oh, no.
There was a lot of people.
That's awesome.
And they had, they had baskets that you could, you know, win or something. I didn't win anything. That you could, you know, win or something. I didn't win anything.
No fun, real fun.
I am involving the website and the policies that are up on the website and.
So yeah.
A great job. And we. We re, we met as a committee and then reorganized um how they are on the website. So then still, there's still some spacing issues, but that's. Just have wanted to. Platform, yeah. Yeah, it looks really good. So thank you.
One of the good vibes, a book that they had called um, Everything You Wanted to Know About Indians, But Were Afraid to Ask. I've been reading. It's a bunch of little short. Blurs and stuff, but it's very interesting such as, like one of them was, I believe that Chippewa. And I could be totally wrong, but it's a mispronunciation of Ojibwe. So when you hear those two, it was like the French and they misspell it. And I was like, oh, something that. I know quite a few Chippewa. I never knew that. So it's just a lot of kind of useful information.
What is, what is?
It's called Everything You Want to Know About Indians, But Were Afraid to Ask. That's by Minnesota guy, Minnesota tribal guy, so.
I would like that.
Yes.
Which one are you students?
We did that last month.
Oh, I love that book. I just truly love.
Yeah.
One of my favorites.
Alright, then onto the director's report. So I tried to get everything. This is one of the last things I do, because then I keep thinking of things and adding. Really. Wow, thank you. Um, so we found out, what, two weeks ago that we got delivered by whatever, something?
Mm-hmm.
Close. Um, we were awarded the full amount that was requested.
Which was what?
Uh, correct, just over two thousand, I think. Um, for Big Sandy, they got the refrigerator ordered. It should be up to the Home Depot. This Friday, and then we'll arrange for delivery to Big Sandy. Um, and installation, I think. Um, got the office chair ordered, uh, the paper cutter and the charging station. And then the rest is, I believe, the Lego robotics. That I have to wait um for the credit card, because the fridge took up most of that for this month, so. But we'll get that going. And then for Geraldine, when I was up with Sammy Joe last week. Um. We got off of her list um. For Legos, the bricks and the plates that she requested, headphones, DVD players, scrap booking, paper trays and rolling storage cart. A library book cart and a rolling TV stand. Um, what's left is Lego storage and then the book dividers. So we'll get on that um. Probably by the end of next week. And so we have. Somewhere in here, more on a, a TV that she's going to take up, so she can do permanent in that way. And then that will. No, there's like a.
I'd like to get rid of mine.
Yeah. Um, we got awarded a five thousand dollar grant from the Dorothy Louise Kyler Fund, which is a sub. Section of the John Henry Eldred Jr. Foundation. Uh, Kim worked on that application and we got that. It was for nonfiction books and audio visual materials. Um, which tends to be the most expensive. So we, Marin has started ordering for that. Um, and then Darlene. And Sarah and Darlene applied for. An A. West Grant.
Why don't you go, honey? I got extra.
And they were awarded that um for.
Sewing machines.
Sewing machines and laptops and a new learning computer. Those are the touchscreen ones. Usually for younger kids, but all the kids, kids can use that. So thank you to Darlene for that. Yeah, and then Humanities Montana, Big Sky Reads Book Club Grants opened in mid-November. And we had missed the last, I'd reached out to them about it. And we had missed the last grant cycle. I mean, they just run out of money. So Sammy Joe applied for that and got it, and I applied for one and got one for Fort Benton. Um, also, so we will be able to order more book kits.
I mean, he's got that.
Awesome, yeah. Um, and then. This is. A jillion lines to. Look at, you can look at it at your leisure later, but this is the big survey. That I have to complete annually. And it has. Um. Everything you would like to know about all the libraries. Um, and this is all of our libraries. Yep, it's all.
But all the libraries in state or?
No, no, no. So our, our three libraries. Um. And I don't know exactly where the line is, but uh, overall, some of the highlights overall, our patron count. Was just up from the, and this is based on fiscal year. So this is, this report was from July first of twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. So compared to the year before that, we were just like a hundred more patrons. I mean, so not a ton there, but also not less.
That's good.
Um, checkouts are good, hotspots are popular in Fort Benton. Um, Big Sandy has a few that go out, Geraldine. Unfortunately. The area itself does not support. There's nothing.
Well, there's no, there's no.
But this has like open hours. Well, some of it is underneath it, right? Like it's. Yeah, this is. So some of it, yeah, some of it is separated out where it will say Big Sandy or Fort Benton. And when that section they're talking about outlets staff, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, okay, perfect. Yeah, since it's kind of the other way, just make sure. Yeah. Um, under library collection, it has a little bar. So I don't know, that must be on. The third page at the bottom, library collection, print materials. So the forty-four thousand five hundred eighty-five is all three branches total. Okay, yeah. There you go, this is.
Yeah.
Let's be available to the public.
Yeah, I can have a copy of that printed off. It's not. It's password protected online through the state, but I can print copies off.
I'd like to have one.
Okay. We're gonna have to. We're gonna look at our next staff meeting that's in January. We need to keep track of. Our programming statistics are a little bit different. There's more of an age breakdown than what we've been doing, plus now that we're doing Zoom meetings and things like that. So there'll be. Um, just a few. So if you go. Page four, maybe. Um, it says library services, circulation, interlibrary loans. Library program sessions, um. Line one hundred ninety-one, number of secret synchronous program sessions targeted at children zero to five and then six to eleven. We've just been doing zero to eleven, but it is a definite difference. And so we're going to look at that and how that will be. Attainable, doable. Um. And not over. Burdensome. So. And then there's onsite programs and offsite programs and.
How long does it take to do it?
No, like. It's nice because there is a portion of it that is um pre-done. And then. Um, like the stuff, like if you see like in the lighter gray. Those are the things that are already filled in. The main, and then I have my big spreadsheet. What happened this year was I realized that some of the functions were. But give me a little panic, but then it wasn't as bad as I thought, so.
Well.
Yeah.
Good vibes to you because I'd be like.
Yeah.
Sorry, someone else, please.
Not me. And then, so if you have any questions, if you're looking through that and have anything later, or something catches your eye, feel free. I will do my best. There's also. Dozens of pages of definitions and explanations. Um, that's why I kind of set that up.
And these goes to.
See. And they have some giant report, but they have those. Everything, yeah. Um, and then we have had. I had a conversation with um one patron about the stickering of a book. And we met on two separate occasions and talked about that and um it did not need. Um, my definition of what would have a sticker and we talked about it and I feel the conversation went really well and. I'm hoping that with that, then um maybe more people will feel comfortable sitting down and and discussing that. Um, Geraldine, Sammy Joe has been working with John Knight from Humanities Montana, and she has scheduled five. Montana Conversation Events through twenty twenty-four. Um, yeah, super excited about that. Um, we are working on. She's working on being able to Zoom our stream each one. Because like in February, there was one, it's beautiful today, but also.
Yeah.
Maybe not so much. So we actually have been talking this week about um she's exploring some grant. Opportunities so that we can get an owl for up there too. I mean, I can share, it's not that big of a deal, but if you're talking about, you need to zoom it because the weather's bad. Be able to get it there. Um. Because the chamber has requested to Zoom. Um, and I think this is going to be another physical item. Much like the hotspots, that once it gets out in the community that that's available, I was able to go Zoom a school board meeting for the school board. One night and things, and so, but also, yeah. And then on. Just a progress report on the cat mediation where we are on November twenty-eighth via Zoom. We met with, it was Danny and I, the complainant and the mediator. And so now our next steps, we just were told to wait. To hear back from her. So we don't have really anything to report out at this time.
What is, what is the OCR?
The Office of Civil Rights. They're based in Seattle. Yeah, and then we can go back to the painting. With that, I kind of have it under both, but we can do that. Unfinished, unfinished business down there. So um, days to remember, this next Monday for Christmas, we are closed. Uh, and then New Year's Day is on a Monday, so we're closed for that day. And then the fifteenth for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And then on January twenty-second is when we're going to do our next collection development. Uh, program. Marian will host that. That will be streamed with this, so. No, this is on Monday. Our meetings are twenty-four. Um, I will put out that information. Hopefully, I'm going to wait till at least like January second, um, because there's just a lot going on right now. I don't want to get too buried, but. I'm gonna, I'm planning on writing an article for the paper for both the River Press and the Mountaineer and making sure that it's. Really out there, that that, that there's a Zoom option and an in-person option and what it will be about. So. Um, I have A, B, C, but I feel like you said.
I.
Oh, I added, I had forgotten the fifteen. Oh, the fifteen. From um Martin Luther being close, yeah. I don't know what, I, I must have had multiple copies going on at once. No, that's it, so.
My copy is it.
Spurface, sorry. No, it's great. Uh, and then. So that's all I have for it, unless anybody else has upcoming things, the babies. Um, the calendars for each branch are online too. I try to update that as close to the first of the month as I can, so.
They're on the website?
On their branch. Um, like I try to do the like physical, like the calendar that we have at the desk, everybody has those. And I try to just put that image on the website and then I do the individual events too. So to make it to that.
Yes.
Each branch. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I think that's been looking pretty well.
Yeah.
Doing it that way.
Yep.
Um, so. Yeah, that's all. That was a great director's report. Um, unfinished business. The policy committee met at the beginning of the month and we went over five laws. Mostly to add the Zoom. Yep, to add this, the Zoom policy um that we approved last meeting. Um, so standing by laws were approved on twelve, seven, twenty-two and they are available on the website. Um, so then there's a couple of changes made. I don't think this should be an action item today. I think I just want it to be out there as. Um, with the changes that we made, so everybody can have time to read it. So I did try to mark them. I didn't put them in color, but if you, on the very bottom of page one. The word appoint, the other word appoint, but the trustees do not appoint fellow trustees, the commissioners do. So we took out a point. And changed it to recommend. It's lightly highlighted.
Where are we at?
In the packet, so turn that page. Then. And then. There we are, alright. So they're at the very bottom page one and the very top of page two. So the, the trustees will recommend members. To the commissioners. And then on page. Four. Section, Article Five, Section Two, we added about. That section, regular meetings can be held via video conferencing and business can be conducted. And then online, if people look at it online, they click to that. And then I think. Down in section five, just below that, we just added wording. To, so the order of business for regular board meetings shall include, but not be limited to the following call to order. We added number two. Cause I don't think, it was either we added two or we added eight.
Or I think.
One of both. But we added um the wording of items on the agenda. I think before it was number two said public comment.
Yeah.
Just public comment. So of items on the agenda, then we added number eight, public comment of items, not on the agenda, but under jurisdiction of the board. So, just those slight kind of housekeeping cleanup. Things, and then on the back page, I changed it. So.
It's okay.
Updates. Anybody having questions or?
Looks good.
And then, yeah, that will be available, so. Yep, and that is on the website, yeah, with those. So the public can read it too. Also, and come with any questions. Um, so then. The Big Sandy painting. So here are, I can forward these pictures to everybody too. So when the door. Units got changed, they were. I mean, they're just different units. So there's holes from the old units. I mean, it just fits differently, so that needs to be taken care of. There's um, Darlene wasn't sure if a primer was used.
She said it was a primer paint kind of thing.
Yeah, and so it's just really thin and.
And it's really, there's places where it's.
So. I'm cracking, I.
Yeah.
Um, so Nona, would you like to talk about your painter?
Um, his name is Neil Colbeck. He's an older gentleman from, he's been a carpenter for a long time and. He's, he's a little older than I am. Neil Colbeck. K U L B E C K. And he's the only, I, I talked to him and it is his wife's nickname is Bo. And um. They like to paint, but he's having eye surgery, so we thought maybe, he thought maybe February or something. He's having eye surgery now probably, and he, he's a good painter and. You know. He's local and I, I don't, I don't, as far as Big Sandy, I don't think there is any other professional.
Right.
Painters.
The only other I like, Shelley Taylor is here, but if somebody, I mean, then you get into having to pay mileage and things, so.
Yeah, and he gets up really early, likes to start early. And then he's done by four o'clock. So, but, and we walked around. Did you walk around Emily? Did she? Yeah, you know, you can kind of see words. And then we noticed where you probably wouldn't take out the shelves, but. Maybe there's a few spots where you take out the shelving and.
Yeah.
In the hallway. Oh, and the Montana room, or was that done? I can't remember.
I don't think the Montana room was. I think it was the children's room.
Was done.
I remember the children. I remember the children's room.
Yeah.
So there is some, there is some paint left, but then probably we'll need to get more paint.
There's a five gallon of the big white or whatever color it is. It wasn't white, white. I can't remember the color. Have you ever looked at the amount of whites?
So this would be for the front room.
The front, the doors. Yeah, the doors, the front room, you know, because we were looking, there's a lot of books. So it's one wall you walk in. No, I've, I've seen him and, and that, well, I think there's books over there too. I don't know. You know, it's a library. There's a lot of books and, and down the whole, that whole room and there's just parts and pieces kind of it's, and then the hallway and then, and then the Montana room. Yeah. But not the back room and not the children's room. So and I don't know square footage or any of that, but he just gave me a quote of $30 an hour or
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, but it both helps him at 60. Yeah. And he'll bring all his supplies and I, I suppose they'll probably need to buy. I suppose we pay for the, I, I don't know on that. I guess I could ask you if that's included or we pay for that. Yeah. Would you like a quote?
That would be great if you have a
When you have so many commitment like that, do you check to make sure they're
Excuse me, I can't.
I'm sorry. Do you make sure they have, make them sign any waivers or make sure they have insurance and like
He has, he's a bonded, he's a bonded. Yeah, he has his 1099s or his W4s or I don't know what they are. Yeah, no, he's a, he has, because he's painted, he's done projects at the farm. He just got done at my mom's house. Yeah. So
Great, great.
And he'll probably put, I think we're going to ask him, he likes to paint very light. So we're going to ask him to do two coats. Because then, then it should last for quite a while, right? You know? Yeah. And, and you touch it, it's just kind of
Powdering.
Yeah. You don't, yeah. Yeah. They're like, what is this spot? Oh, we washed there.
Then he'll be able to like patch up before he paints all of that.
Yeah, because around the door it's, it's come off. I wonder what it has to do.
Like putting, right?
Yeah.
Some type of tape somehow or something. I don't know.
He's a full blown construction guy. But he's the only one in town, I think, that paints.
Right. Do we want to wait to get a quote or do we want to move forward?
What do you want on the quote? What's the quote?
Sounds like he won't be available till February with the surgery, right?
He said January, February, but
So he, I mean, to include the, his, his price and then what supplies? And yeah.
And who, who pays for the supplies? Like, I mean, do we, yeah.
Yeah.
Is the supplies included in the quote? Well, I don't know if he can give you, he can't really give us total costs. You don't have hours.
Right. Maybe like an idea of how many hours he might.
Yeah, he probably can.
I mean, a quote means, but it could fluctuate.
And you want to know like his What is that? What it, what's, what'd you call? You want that, you want his little license thing. Yeah. Okay.
It just protects.
No, I, I know. Yeah. Okay, I can do that.
Yep. Perfect. Hey, is that all on that one? Yeah, should we just postpone? We should wait if we want to wait to get the estimate. Cause our next meeting is January 24th. So Okay.
I really can't remember what he said. January, February. We, we just said not, we said in the new year. So we didn't really pick
But he, he wasn't like, I have to be done by January 15th.
No, he didn't say that. No. And it's winter and he does a lot of things outside in Big Sandy. You know, he can't do it now. So Well, so what if he wants to do, what if he wants to do January 15th? Do I call all you or?
Yeah, well, you could send that to Danny and we can, yeah, probably. Yeah. I mean, because there already is some paint there.
It's, there's a five gallon.
Yeah. If you wanted to get, if there was parts, you could get started on at least.
And it wouldn't matter if we weren't, if we hadn't really approved him yet or, or what do you want to do there?
I think we should approve.
I do too.
Before.
And then I'll get you this, I'll get the licensing thing and, and his price, whatever. Well, his price, he didn't, he didn't really say, because you know, thirty, thirty, sixty dollars for both of them, you know, an hour.
Which seems very fair.
And he has all his
It seems very fair.
He, yeah, yeah. He has, he'd probably just have to get new rollers and stuff because he's painted in time. So, so it'd be okay? To tell him to do whenever or are we voting on it?
No, we should vote on it.
Okay.
I think, do we want to wait for the quote though? For the estimate? And then he just would have to start in February instead of January.
I was thinking, no, just go.
Just go.
Well, we can, okay, we can't.
I mean, I guess you could put a ceiling on it. Like if she comes back with a quote, it's like $7,000.
But obviously we're not going to go with it. The other side says this isn't vital. This is cosmetic. So I mean, if it, if it took a month longer than we liked, it's not interfering with the function of the library.
Well, but I think part of it is if he's got other jobs. It's kind of like when Lenny was working up in Geraldine. And so if he says, well, I have from the 15th to the 22nd.
Open.
And I don't have anything else till June, like
Oh, he'll have some more. He'll, he said January, February, because, because really, you know, a lot of his stuff is, is out. Well, I, I don't know. I'll, I'll call him tonight. Okay. I'll talk to him, but, but so we just give you, call you back with that stuff or?
No, let's vote on it and have a cap.
A cap? What do you mean?
Like come, like if the quote comes back.
Like the quote comes back over, I mean, I don't know. It's hard because I don't love square footage on that.
Yeah, I don't either. See, I don't.
I have that in my giant report.
But then we're walking around and you know, there's so many.
So according to this, the, so this is square footage. So this would be the floor. So of course not all of it. It's 3,500 square feet. How did you do the math on figuring out what, how many hours?
Yeah, well, I'm short. Yeah.
I just don't want to put him behind or he come, you know, do you know what I mean? Like I thought very because we'd have to wait till January 27th or yeah, 24th.
We'd have to wait till February then, wouldn't we? Yeah. And I just, well, I could go, I mean, call him.
Can we do a conditional approval?
Yeah. I mean, we could just say hours. Sixty dollars an hour. Two days, like 16 hours, two full days.
He won't do, he'll, he'll, he'll start at seven 30 in the morning.
You think it would be one day's worth?
And he'll quit at four.
I really, that's a big project.
He does not. He's older, so he gets
That's 1,400, $40. So like
Five thousand or that. I mean, we should be pretty high. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I don't think it's going to be.
Well, yeah, but that's the thing. No, then it doesn't matter.
You don't have to tell me what Normally if you have a contractor like that, whatever they give you a bid for, which you should get some kind of estimation, estimation and stuff on your end at 20%. And then that will be your top.
Okay. So it's pretty common to approve with a top limit?
Well, you'll know. So let's say you will already, once you get this guest list on it. So let's say he says it's $5,000. You guys need to add 20% in your head. So you'll approve that. What the estimate is, but you'll know. So you'll need to budget for
Yeah, over.
That 20%.
Which I think I mean thank you. Because like if it's over five, yeah.
I don't think this.
It's a big room.
But, but it's a big room, but there's, there's a lot of stuff. You're going to be taping forever. You know, there's a, there's a lot of
You know, in your head, whatever he gives you, go ahead and in your head.
But I think, I mean, yeah, because if we hit 5,000, we can
We just rediscuss it.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
So 5,000 you want as a cap?
Yeah.
Okay.
He doesn't need to.
Yeah, he doesn't need to. But I gotta
It's not like that.
And besides, he can watch the meeting anyway. So
So but now that things happen and out of his control or things happen. So if he says $5,000, you already know that you're going to approve another 20%.
Yeah.
Move to approve this pending the estimate?
Or the estimate coming in less than 5,000 or something?
Yeah. Can we, or over?
Can we word it so that?
And like I, I make a motion to approve moving forward with with Neil, Neil's painting, the Big Sandy Library provided his estimate comes in less than $5,000.
So that's
I know, but did that sound like what we're thinking would be a legal motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds, that's
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve
Neil.
Neil.
Neil and Bo.
To approve Neil painting the Big Sandy Library, providing his estimate comes in before the project and is less than $5,000.
Okay.
Or less than our budgeted.
I like that.
No.
Yeah.
Sure. Sounds good. You're cold.
Okay.
Don't you have like a shirt underneath and a shirt underneath and a, okay. I second, I second whatever all she said.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I can, I will talk to him tonight. I'll
Cause now we need an estimate for
Or what? It's just good to have a paper trail.
Yeah.
All right. This has been properly, properly moved and seconded that we approve Neil to do the painting in Big Sandy. With the budgeted amount. There it is. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. Let's all in favor, say aye. All opposed saying no. It has been approved by voice vote.
And I'll get a W9?
W4?
W9?
W9? That sounds right. Yeah.
Okay.
And that just has to be before he gets paid.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, then on to new business. So this is just opening up for discussion. We need to start thinking about the steps slash procedure in the formation of the reconsideration committee. So this would be if form comes in after someone has talked to me and if the person is not, if we can't come to an agreement, then they submit a form. So then it would go
Can we form a committee?
And then we need to form a committee, which
How do we do that?
How we do that? Which needs to have, I should pull that up. Needs to have community members. So it's the library director, two trustees, a community library professional, which we had, did discuss before. It can be like up like to Great Falls. It doesn't have to be like from one community and then one community member.
Okay.
So see it again. So the director. Two trustees. One library professional. And one community member, which the two trustees can't be chair, right? One of them might be the
No, I think the one is the chair.
What is the chair?
Yeah.
Because I thought that it gets presented. No, I, I mean, I think it wants the chair.
Could they be zoom?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Okay. Like if I could just stay home and just do it and I'd be honored if I don't.
So there, there can only be two trustees.
Okay.
Because of Well, it's not a committee. I mean, it is, but it's not like we set up for, it's a different, that's what we need to how we just set that up. But like if you are on that committee and you need to zoom in, I believe that yes, that will be
Okay. Okay. Then zoom is nice.
But it's not necessarily a public.
We could put out a request. For interested community members and just kind of keep a running list. And then that way we could react quickly if a form comes in. We could have a list, either randomly pick or have each, like have the chair and the complaint, each pick someone. That might slow it down, but do you, are you thinking you want to have people ready before the form comes in or just wait until a form comes in and then begin?
There, you think we need to begin to form it?
Yeah.
Because in my mind, it's going to be different every form. Like it should be rotating through different people.
To me, it sounds kind of like a jury and the standard thing is have a group of people willing to do it. If the, if it comes to, then you call.
I don't think, I don't know. I like the idea of random.
Yeah. I just have a group. We could have online. Are you interested in being in this committee? That goes, or different signup ways.
And it's going to take time. You've got to read the book.
You've got to read the book.
Oh, whoever's on the
Yeah, everybody on the committee.
Everybody on the book? I mean
On the committee. There's only one book at a time though. We can only do one book at a time. So it's not quite, yeah. I hope.
Can you skim it if it's yucky? Oh, I don't like this book.
I suppose that could be part of it. If we have a pool, we could say this is what's coming up. Are you willing? Cause
Read it.
Yeah.
Because it is quite of the
Yeah.
There may be some books.
Policy that you need to read over.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if we're doing, like if we're doing community members and people like that, I think that they should definitely have the option.
Yeah.
Like if they get drawn or picked or whatever, however we bring that up, we call into Emily, we contact them and say, hey, this is the book that's the question. Are you willing?
Cause that way we could send it out to everyone in the pool, see who we get back and then do a randomized selection. Cause you know, if it's something like a true crime, like a, you know, a nasty true crime, there might be a significant number that's like, no, I don't want to read about that.
Another thing that just popped in my mind is we're going to need more than one book if everybody needs to read.
But what did you just say, Kim? You were like, it was like a yucky book.
Like a true crime. Like say it was, like say
Yes. Okay, like we could go, oh.
Well, no, if you're like, as far as community members, if they don't want to read that one, then they wouldn't, then they, they wouldn't volunteer to be on the committee.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It's going to give you an idea if you don't
Yeah. Be on the committee for that book.
Yeah. Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Cause this wouldn't be a policy, it'd be a procedure, right? Cause we have it written down then.
So we have it written down. So when the time comes, we can call that and be like, how do we select?
So it shows no bias like this.
Exactly.
What we do.
And I would like to have that in place.
Yes.
Before instead of after.
Yeah. Makes sense. And with procedures, do we have to set them up? You want to set them at the board, but we can. It's not as formal as a policy, correct? It's able to be changed.
Yeah.
More informally. Cause more nuts and bolts of, you know, things change, resources change. Okay.
And as soon as we get some ideas, what we'll do is we'll send it to the policy committee to write it up.
Nice.
And then we'll present it to the policy committee that will come and present it to the board.
Okay. So in this case, we don't have to worry as much about the email chain. And what was it when you do a silent? Basically, if you do an email chain, it's like you're discussing it privately. In this case
I think what would be best then is like, I could start one where I blind carbon copy everybody probably. And that could go, or you can send suggestions to
The policy committee.
Policy committee.
Okay. For board input.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
The safest bet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because potentially I can see it. Well, that these two men decided what they wanted to do and then they, you know, like
Then the policy committee can see who the ideas are coming from, but
And then talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then it will come back to the board for a full discussion anyways.
Yeah. That makes sense. And then do we wanna open up to the public?
Yes, absolutely.
Who should they email? Should they email Danny or Emily with ideas? Okay, so the public can email Emily with ideas for.
Emily.
Committee procedure, yes. That makes sense.
I just wanna start thinking about it.
Oh, I know.
Start thinking about, talking about it.
Yeah. Or it's a hole there. This, I would think the, the way they do jury selection might be the best, cause it'd be the similar thing, you have a whole pool and you want it to. To show. The people that you're not picking people you know will go certain direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be nice, it might be nice for all of us to kinda be available, we could trade.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean.
Yeah.
All the time, no, I think that we all get to do.
Yep. The only thing I can think of is there's, as I understand it, we're not worried about um. Privacy with challenges, because I suppose it could. Make it less private if we email the specific book to the pool of. Public.
We could just go by theme or why it's being challenged.
Okay. Privacy to the challenger.
I don't think any information about the challenger will screw.
No, but we, if we name the book specifically, it might be two. It might remove some level of privacy for the challenger, but like Emily said, we could just do themes, do like, there's book being challenged, it has. Yeah. Are you comfortable? Are you comfortable being on the committee?
Yeah, and that's a good starting point, yeah. Open it up to the public.
I used to sit on grievance boards and stuff and I could have to do a committee like that. I would send a form. Well, after I got a select of people that I wanted to send all the things, I would send out like a form. What, what are you interested in? What type of works?
Yeah. You send out.
Right, so.
What, okay.
And then you will already know that, oh, this person really likes this, likes this kinda stuff.
Okay.
You have all of that, and you already have people that says, hey, I wanna sit on this committee. So you can pull from, well, we know this person really likes this, and we didn't give them really names, we gave them numbers. So nobody knew who that person is, so that person would say you had, let's say you have twelve people. But all the time, so I'm gonna be on it, I'll read anything. So when you do a report or something, you didn't give anybody a say, you'd say, let's say I was number five. Number five is here to, and she got a booklet, or that person got a booklet, we didn't really give names and stuff. And, and they didn't know when we would bring them in and talk to them, who had that information. Does that make sense? So you had, and then we already had, but yeah, people are comfortable reading, you know, handling these subjects. And we just had numbers.
But you didn't know who the people were.
Because. I knew the people, but nobody else.
You're still just trying. Okay, you're still, it's still a random draw, you're not picking that person because of their criteria.
I knew there wasn't sign, sign the numbers, but people that was on the board with me, they didn't know. Who these people were. They knew that they had a number. And they were just numbers. Because that way, that person couldn't, if you knew, like, if your friend was, but oh, you got picked, you didn't talk. You know, you don't have a name, you just know that person, and only one, maybe two people knew whose number and who it was. Until it was set down.
Number five?
Cause that helps protect privacy.
Think we're just gonna be illegal. I think that's, I mean, that's a good starting point, right? Threw out some ideas. Send ideas and.
Yeah, keep thinking about it.
Our next policy meeting is January eleventh. Okay, if you have, please try to get them in by January. Okay, perfect. Then we'll open it up for public comment, I know it's not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board.
I went to Washington DC last month.
Did you stay here?
I'm, hi, I'm Bill Wood. I went to Washington DC last month and these pictures. Are copies of frescoes in the ground floor of the Jefferson Building of the Library of Congress. I was stunned, every one of them is, is uh, there's doorways, and then there's, I don't know, it's how it's spawned, but. These are.
Oh, the arch?
Eight foot wide, yeah, here you can see the arch. They're eight foot wide, they're four feet tall. They're obvious. I think it's really cool, eighteen ninety-six, yeah, just, just so you guys know.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
Nice.
I saw them too.
Don't get rid of them. So sell them at a really good price.
I am done.
Sissy Felton. Um, I know we haven't really talked about this in a while, but my concern is labeling certain books.
Is.
Labeling certain books, because I just got back from Texas too, and a lot. Today's society is not safe for anyone, doesn't matter if you're in this country or out of this country. And I'm worried if you put certain labels on books and stuff, you have somebody with this book. With the label on it, we'll put a target on their back. And it's, it's.
Say, say that again, please.
If you put a label on a book, let's say some young. I'll say fourteen-year-old has a book and it has a certain label on it. Here, we're kinda safe, but not really. Other states you are not, so if you have this fourteen-year-old kid with this label on a book, we're putting a target on a kid's book. On that kid's back, and I'm really worried, coming back from Texas, I learned that. We're not, nobody's safe in this.
So they are, they are, so they have the book and everyone around them knows that book, what is in that, and so they are harassed.
I mean, like with mystery, are, are we talking about something specific here or are we, because in my mind, labeling a mystery book. When I want a mystery book, it's very helpful as a patron to be able to find.
But you're not talking about mysteries, are we?
I am not talking about mysteries. But I, but there could be, you know, even Jewish books, if you have books that have Jewish, you know, I know. Today's society, nobody's safe anymore on certain things, because, but you have a right to read. What you have to, you know, you can't judge a book by its cover. So I, I worry about that, and I'm seeing more and more. Kids are getting harassed, kids are feeling suicide, and, and it's just not safe. We're in a different world now, and we all wanna protect children and stuff. But to me, parents still have a responsibility, if you're in the kitchen cooking with your child. And you got a stove going, what are you telling your child? Stay away from stove, it's hot. They learn that at home. Don't touch the stove, hot. Just think that.
Okay, thank you, Sissy.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, anybody else? All right, and let's, oh, next meeting is. Um, noon Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four in Fort Benton. Thank you, everybody, for being here.